I think that it's after one thirty, I've called a meeting of the budget evaluation team. It looks like the notice for the meeting is probably posted on June ninth, twenty twenty five. Our item number one is approval of the minutes.
My party, most important.
All in favor? Number two is our B E T watch list. Is there anything to address or questions on the watch list? Seeing none, we can move on, no action. And our chairman can take it with number three.
All right, sorry y'all. Item three, John.
You got enough data for us.
For benefit, yeah, real quick, I just like you got a document that was passed out and without objection, the chair will ask the clerk to make this document a part of the record.
Okay.
Objection noted.
Well, good morning or good afternoon. This report reflects claims going to be paid through tomorrow's B O C C meetings, so it's pretty up to date. The good news is on medical, we're down three hundred eighty nine thousand compared to same time last fiscal year, so that's looking way better. Remember, we had that real spike in claims for a while, we seen that go way down, so that's good, they got caught up. Prescription's up, nine hundred ninety four thousand, about eight percent. We budgeted five percent increase, so we're still trending pretty well, we're still within the budget realm with those two items, because we factored an increase on medical and prescription, so we're still within the budget realm on those. If you go down to reimbursements. You know, we're lagging a little behind on reimbursements, but the good news is with the special budget board meeting this Thursday, we've had some reimbursements come in, it'll be credited to the account Thursday, and we'll go over these totals, especially for prescription rebates, we'll go way over on that.
You know what those totals are gonna be?
About, we're gonna have about three. About one point two million of that, their prescription rebates, so we're, you know, we're gonna be last year in terms of that, and that's a lot to do with the pharmacy, because other payments come in as prescription rebate, so. The total fund, looking at everything through the end of the year, we're gonna have some big appropriations on the special budget board, because right now we're out of cash and fund, and it's just a timing issue. We have about two point two million dollars going in at the special budget board meeting Thursday, and that should, based on averages, get us through the end of the year on medical prescription, okay? There is an item on the budget board, I mean, on the B E T agenda, you'll see, I think it's the last item, a transfer from reserves, and what that is, is with that money we're getting on Thursday, and then our averages, that should cover everything we expect. You know how expectations go, sometimes they go below, sometimes they go above, so I've got a five hundred thousand dollar request on there, and then really, the main part of that is for the county pharmacy, because we're fronting money, and it takes us about two months to get that money back into the fund. So it's just really a cash flow issue, so they're about out of money for this fiscal year, I technically cannot be able to get the prescriptions. So with that, with that B E T request, three hundred thousand would go to the pharmacy to help them get prescriptions now, and go through probably the first couple of weeks of July, so make sure there's no interruptions in that. And the other two hundred thousand is really just a cushion in case the claims come in bigger than expected. As a reminder, you know, we're budgeting certain amounts, and as you know, those amounts aren't given all as lump sums, so it's divided into little payments, and as we get closer to the end of fiscal year, when cash comes available, then we get that cash, so it's always a struggle to fund things at the first of fiscal year, so. If we've got that extra five hundred thousand, then let the pharmacy, you know, order enough prescriptions for an entire month, and give us just about two hundred thousand dollar cushion in case claims can get higher than expected for the rest of this month.
How's the utilization of the pharmacy?
Great, better?
Yeah.
Great, we're running about three hundred thousand dollars a month, so we keep seeing it trickle up, trickle up, so that's good. It's just really been a cash flow issue for us, because we're having to encumber money and then wait several months to get that money back into use, so it's really a timing issue with that.
It's a pretty standard that you're waiting two months.
It's because, it's kind of because of our internal processes, so how we get paid for the prior month, is we get a portion at the first of the month, kind of, for that prior month, and so that portion goes on the budget board to be appropriated, and then towards the end of the month, we get the rest of the monies, but that has to wait until the entire next month, until the next budget board.
Unless we have a special budget board.
Yeah. So, but pharmacy's doing well, better than expected, it's just really kind of a cash flow issue at the end of the fiscal year, really.
Speaking of cash flow, have you had a chance to do an analysis on the result of the change that we did this year, as far as front funding benefits versus not, front funding where you weren't getting everything that we had budgeted through general fund that should have been going, but wasn't?
Because that definitely helped us, yeah, that definitely helped us, added about a million dollars extra to the fund, so that's really helped us, and again, we struggle every month, I think my, my, my budget's the only budget like this, where I think we struggle until we get enough cash in county to, to fully fund it, so, because our expenses come in unexpected every month, we don't know for sure, we can kind of budget for the expected, but if we have some high months, then, you know, we might run out of cash, not budgeted funds, but cash, but I think that really helped with those employer premiums. You know, looking at the year-to-date budget report on Amunis, some things don't make sense, but I've asked finance to clarify some of those things, so hopefully get some more clarification on that, but I think that, that funding of the employer premiums upfront really helps us, for sure.
Well, it would be nice if somehow we could, at some point, get a decent reserve in that account, so that you weren't having to be as reactionary all the time, and you could be a little more proactive, because you're not contingent upon what happens in this short duration, if you've got money in there to be able to handle that, I think it might help your planning and strategy.
This has been the best year so far in terms of that, it's really helped, and I think the next budget year, you approved a budget that has a little more cushion in it too, just in case things go up, so I think it's gonna put us in even a better place, knock on wood if expenses.
It depends on, yeah. It's just we had, not only did we see a benefit from those changes that we made, we've also seen, you know, it looks like a steady, you know, stable, if not decrease in, you know, medical and in prescription, hopefully, many of the averages play out, will be, you know, close to where we were last year. But next year, even though we have cushion, we don't experience the same type of expenses that we did this year, we'd be.
Be give me, you know.
Be back to where we were last year.
Yeah, just everything's right now is looking pretty positive, this, end of this fiscal year, as compared to prior years, we have less big cases going on too, and that could change as well, but everything seems to be flowing a little better this fiscal year.
Do we have any that are currently in stop loss?
Just a couple of small ones, a couple of real small ones, just only like fourteen thousand over thirty thousand, but, so that's good too. In the year, year in the past, we would have paid fifty or so stop loss to technicals of guns.
So with the two point two that's on the budget board for Thursday, is there any more that we can capture if we were to have a special budget board? You see what I'm asking?
Yeah, so really with the timing of it, that special budget board Thursday gives me the money that I normally get at the rigor, but for the next week, so that's really all the, you know, all the, and we're having one the following week anyway, so I think we're in a good place with that now.
So earlier, when we were talking about cash flow, is that more for very beginning of the month? Is that, I'm kind of tracking where, where Christie's going, I think, we had talked earlier about some of your issues being how long it takes to process and get everything in, because we're waiting for budget boards, if we're not having to do that this month, if we're able to allocate all of those dollars because of having multiple budget boards, does that mean that you're going to be able to allocate more money this month than you would have otherwise been able to, and would that be sufficient to get you through the end of the year and purchase your pharmaceuticals to begin the next year?
It won't, because we're only talking about five extra days, and so the, the time period we're capturing with the special budget board is really all this stuff, month-end stuff, premiums we collect, the rebate check that came in, stuff like that. But, but moving forward, next fiscal year, you know, we only begin with the small cash balance, so if we have a high month, maybe another special budget board will be needed to capture those prescription rebates coming back. But, but to reiterate, we're, we're in budget rounds now, we're working within the budget, we have enough money, we get through the fiscal year, we should be okay. It's just now this year, the new process is since February, we're cash fronting about three hundred thousand dollars out the door every month, and then waiting to get it back, which in past years, we've never done, so that's just a new process, and it's understandable, but going into the next fiscal year, we might, towards the first of fiscal year, need some special budget board, meaning just to allocate those prescription rebates that come in.
Well, moving forward, when we set your budget annually, may need to consider not just looking at your twelve months of expenses, looking at front for the beginning of that next year, when we're setting that budget.
Correct. That's looking a lot better than two prior fiscal years.
I said no. Doesn't look like it.
No.
Which is awesome.
Not going where Eric says. Luckily, the medical claims came way down, we've gone through a period, like I told you, I was really concerned, if that continued, we'd be in a total different situation.
All right, anybody have anything else? Any other questions?
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Okay, is there a motion to receive report?
Motion to receive report, I'll second.
You got a motion, second to receive report, calls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Ayes, heave, thanks, John. All right, item number four, discussion possible action regarding policies, processes, and procedures related to F Y twenty five twenty six, budget reviews and recommendations, I don't think we need this item today, so move on to item five, discussion possible action regarding the drain down equipment needed to prevent H V A C chilled water oils from freezing during cold weather events at the existing detention center, and whether the two hundred eighty thousand needed for the project can be funded through. Yep, this was just a discussion of the last one, last month we met, people asked if this could be funded by ARPA or some other means other than general fund. Yes, we have checked with Accenture, and it does meet qualifications to, to be paid for under ARPA, under the original H V A C replacement that we did, it's just go back project that, there's enough money left in that to cover, so we're good to go. Okay, so no action needed by budget board or B E T?
Correct.
All seven. Good news, that's all, all right, no action needed on five. Item six, I believe we got an email that this one was requested to be stricken.
Motion to strike.
There we go. We got a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Sure.
Can you elaborate other than? I don't know, I just got an email that said that they, that this item was gonna, wanna be stricken from, I think it was Jessica at the Senate, so I don't know anything other than that.
The only thing I can offer is I think we're discussing twelve sixty is still there, and there's quite a bit of money in it.
Correct.
Using that for G P S, so it's not that we're gonna not fund G P S, and it'll be the fund where Kathy puts her money in when she collects.
You mean like we used to do?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. All right, we got a motion and a second to strike, item number six, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes, heave. Item seven, discussion possible action regarding recommendation to transfer twenty one thousand six hundred from general fund reserve to general fund county clerk, regarding payment for services associated between that one, county clerk and Oklahoma County Criminal Justice Authority, Chantel.
I place this item, for myself, there was a question regarding what does it look like, because the opportunity to include this within her annual budget was, was missed, and so I had talked a little bit to Cody and Christie, that this really is probably an appropriate item for the next fiscal year's watch list, but wanted to put it on today's agenda just for discussion, there's not an action to put it on next year's watch list yet, because that hasn't been established. And so if there are any questions pertaining to this, and I know that Carrie and I are taking note, but we're just putting it on for discussion, but also the intent is to ask for a transfer for the next fiscal year.
Who's budget would it go to, what's the, what's it for, dollar to payroll services, or?
These are the services that the county clerk provides to the criminal justice authority, it's payroll revenues.
So why would it go into your budget?
It'll go into county clerk general fund, that'll, that's who, that's who I'm usually.
They're not over at Paycom, if that's where you're wondering, they're still processing payroll.
Jail's paying the county clerk to do those services, why would it go into your budget?
If jail is paying.
No, the jail is paying the county, so what they're requesting is, is instead of the money just going into the general fund county to do other things with, they would like the money to go directly to them, or indirectly through reserve dollars.
But I'm totally lost.
This is something we've never done before.
Right.
I mean, she turned in an estimate of needs for next, kind of clerk turned in an estimate of needs of what she needs, and we funded it.
Yeah, but whenever the trust first took over, they, there was an M O U with the county clerk to pay all at that time, just like it was with the treasurer's office, so we would send money to the, to the jail, just like with us, there's an M O U with us, so the money went to the jail. Like the money for our transportation agreement pushed to the jail, so I'm confused, and that's, if that's the case, why don't we just do that with all of them, you see where I'm headed, so.
The intent for this item is to ask a question regarding the general process for all M O Us, of course, she's only putting an item regarding her M O U, but the question is, if there's a memorandum of understanding between an office and criminal justice authority, and they pay those dollars, the dollars are currently deposited to general fund.
General government or general fund?
Just general, general fund, and they hold for the next budget season, so the question is, what is the process to recoup, to, to receive those payments that were paid?
But see, the way we've, the way we've done it though, in the past, it doesn't necessarily mean just because we did it in the past that we should do it forward, but when there's a estimate of needs, that says we need a certain amount of money, then it's not necessarily where that money's coming from, it's that that money gets there, and so I think in a roundabout way, this twenty one thousand six hundred, since that's part of the overall revenue coming into the county, that's, that twenty one six is part of what your general fund allocation is gonna be next year, anyway, if that makes sense.
I think to Christie's point, creating that budget, that estimate of needs, is where the appropriate process would be to capture it, to put that in the real list.
So are there expenses, are there expenses that were missed in your estimate of needs?
The expense for this purpose wasn't captured in estimated, in the.
They fixed costs, though.
Yes. I mean, her estimate of needs has been built in, she gets funded from general fund revenue for that, it's all, it's all there, means.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, right now, I'm, I'm still, I'm, I'm not, I'm just not understanding, okay, so I'm, I'm just, let me use my role at the temple, so, so I can understand, so we have an M O U with, with the jail for X amount of hundreds of thousands of dollars to do transportation and to operate the eleventh floor courthouse, okay? When the jail comes in and asks for that money, they ask for it in their budget, and then we invoice them for that, based on services rendered.
So those funds they're paying you are built into their budget?
Correct, so my question then becomes, are those funds not already built into the jail's budget when they pay Paycom or whatever, like who's done their services in the past?
They are, Brandon, Brandon, the, what they're asking right now, that money is in their budget to pay for this, the county invoices them for this amount, and that money comes and goes into county general fund, what the board is wanting is instead of going in, when we invoice them and the jail trust pays for that, what they're wanting is those dollars to go back to the clerk's office instead of to general fund.
Am I wrong then, in looking at this like they would be almost double dipping, these are fixed costs, right, they're personnel costs, so we're funding them for that person, and then that person, a portion of that person's time is providing this service, and then they're getting this money back if they, if we do this?
I think that's what Christie was getting at, we fully funded their operations, so unless there's other expenses, that's why I had asked whether there was other expenses that weren't included.
So if we do this, then there needs to be a corresponding decrease in their, their ask, right, because they're relying on these revenues to fund a portion of their operation that we're already funding one hundred percent, am I linking that right?
You don't even have to do that, it's already taken care of, I mean, if these are coming in monthly, you're not gonna sit here and, and add to their general fund every month, one, you can't, our budget's, we can't change the bottom line. You've got your general fund revenue, we know every office brings in revenue, you know, charges for services, and there's a pot of money, and then everyone's general fund gets funded, and that's just, that's how the general fund works, if, if they have additional services or need additional people, you put it in your estimate.
Is it common, just because I don't think we have this scenario, that's what, that's what was.
That's like me asking for, that's like you asking for your fees, it's a bad precedence to set, it'd be like, hey, we bring in this money, once, once a dollar goes into the general fund pot revenue, it's just one lump sum, it's, it's not.
Is it a common practice in the county for whenever an entity or an elected official is providing a service, that it would be billed back to general fund, because like, for example, ours, we don't have that scenario, every one of ours is billed from a service fee, and like, I mean, so using the example, I guess, and I can kind of see where this is different.
Service fee would be different.
And I, and I see where you're, I see where you're headed, that, you know, like for us, but for that M O U, those ten employees wouldn't exist, so.
That's, that's where it's different, but basically, Brandon, if we were, if the, if the county was operating with the sheriff's office in the same way with the clerk's office, what would have happened was, let's say that transportation and eleventh floor M O U is seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, well, in the clerk's instance, that seven hundred fifty thousand dollars would have been front funded into the budget, and then we would be asking for the seven fifty coming back from the invoice when we had already got it budgeted upfront. Now with the sheriff's office, we don't get that upfront, so we have the, the service fee, and we use that to pay for the fees separately, but this here already has all of those expenses, is my understanding from this conversation, those expenses were already contemplated in the estimate of needs, and it was fully funded through general fund.
Right, I guess what, I guess what I'm saying though is that, I get, where I'm super confused is that, so if the county clerk is already being funded at a hundred percent with all these positions, then why are you sending money to the jail for it? You should have like, it seems so, sir.
Because we got back to the Shen Trust, and they had to pay for the services that the county was, that's why we had to set up those, those M O U's from the beginning.
It's been that same cost and such.
Yeah. So Chantel on this, I mean, without the twenty one six, are you, are y'all in a bind, or?
No, I think that item really is to discuss and understand the process, and if the correct, if the process that makes the most sense, identifying what that is, my understanding is her current conversations with criminal justice authorities, there's definitely an assessment of those services, what more may be needed, what, what does it look like, and so this is just one of the questions amongst many others that has come up.
Well, I mean, I mean, none of it makes any sense, it makes no sense for me to answer that little twenty one thousand six hundred, read it ahead and write back to me and pretend we're off, I mean, that makes no sense, but I see what you're saying. Okay, yeah, sorry, I was just, I was.
Well, the whole idea though, going back, was that the county wouldn't be basically a hundred percent funding the operations of the jail trust, and they would have other revenue sources, so that we wouldn't be giving them the envelope of twenty one six forever, they would eventually be filling that envelope themselves with other monies to turn around and, and give us, that's the way it was set up, that part of that happened in the filling with other.
Right, that's the sense right now. I mean, I, I guess, let me ask you this, so if you didn't have that contract with the jail, would you lower your salaries by twenty one six, or would you still maintain the same amount of fee? You know, that's probably a question you weren't prepared for.
I, I don't think I can answer that question, I think the main thing that I can answer is for the additional services, where the, what was assessed in twenty nineteen, there's a reassessment now.
Yeah, well, the reason I'd ask that is because, let's say that you, well, so if the county is giving the clerk's office twenty one, twenty one thousand six hundred to pay for those salaries, and then giving the jail twenty one thousand six to pay for that M O U, we're essentially giving them, we're putting fifty four thousand dollars towards that bucket, and the county's only getting twenty two thousand back, so at that point, it seems like that you're subsidizing, or something, I, again, I'm published this day on holiday express, because I'm still not understanding, but.
So we used to have an M O U between M I S or I T and the trust, similar type deal, right, for services, and the money that the trust paid when they paid was deposited into the general fund to Christie's point earlier, so.
So, okay, so, so what you're saying though is that, because the way I read that is that you're looking for a transfer of that money from general fund to you, that's why I'd ask you, I mean, are y'all short, if you don't get the twenty one six, or, I'm not trying to jump swap, but, I mean, if it's truly, if it's truly, just trying to understand how it works.
And I think I understand your question, the intent of the item, because it is a request for a transfer, is because it was not captured in the estimate of needs, and I understand Christie's point to hers as well, so this is to obviously generate conversation, which is totally working.
So whenever.
Success.
So, so I guess it's how our, so when you, when you generate your estimates of need, and you include all of your employees, with or without the jail M O U, would you still submit the same estimates of need as well? So, so let, let's, let's say that the jail did all their own payroll and whatever, and would you still submit the exact same estimates of need for them? You see, I'm, you see what I'm asking, so, or does it, or does it in fact change by the amount of twenty one thousand six hundred dollars a year?
Because you're doing the change.
Cody, help me, somebody help me out here.
No, I think I understand your question, I just don't believe I have.
Okay.
Well, that all of the employees that would be providing those services were contemplating any estimate of needs that were submitted, so it seems to me like they would have been paid for, the analogy that, that I think is kind of in line with this, is while this is just one little piece of your expenses, juvenile, so we get a, we have a contract with O J A, and they reimburse us, but we front fund O J A for the full cost, they, they tell us what, these are what our expenses are gonna be for next year, which is kind of what we're saying, some may think that you guys have submitted your estimate of needs, to say, this is what we need next year. Juvenile, they submit it, and then we give them that full budget, and then as O J A sends in payments, it just goes into general fund, and we, we use that cash as part of our budget to pay for that, right? Juvenile doesn't turn around and ask for those O J A dollars that are coming in. Juvenile doesn't turn around and ask for those OJA dollars that are coming into the general fund on top of the budget that we've already given. Does that make sense? And I think that's what Christie's kind of getting at is if we made this change, it would be kind of like doing that. Giving juvenile their full budget and then as those OJA payments come in, give them that as well, which would be like double funded. Is that, is that kind of what you're getting at, Christie? Okay.
Let me, I guess maybe. But how many of these types of contracts exist?
We got one with the clerk. We got one with the treasurer's office and one with employee benefits.
Where it goes back into the general fund.
All three of those are like that. And MIS was like.
Maybe it's time for a new opinion on whether or not it's still a sham.
Well, he knew that it was never. I, I don't know. I'm confused now.
Yeah, I. But, but I mean, I, I mean, I understand it.
So the intention is there's no action needed today, but we will have further discussion about this after the first fiscal year.
Yes, because there's not an item to request to put something on the next year's watch list. Um, I don't know if there's anything you can do other than maybe defer to the next meeting, but, um, correct. I, no, no real action.
Well, is that something you'd be able to find out though? I mean, obviously five minutes on the watch list, but could you find out if, I mean, without, I guess, without the 21 six? One, are you going to say, I mean, or two, you know, on the estimates of need, would you fill it out there? And I think that's probably, you know, like for example, let's use employee benefits. I mean, I, I mean, I don't think John hired anybody extra to, you know, to, to do that. Cause I mean, just they were robust enough to, because they were, we already had. And you, you, you all had, had those employees before you got moved over. So maybe there would just be a way to, that, that just seems like a weird shell game for no reason potentially. I don't know. There might be some legal reason I get, but, but I don't get, but I just thought.
I maybe make a motion to defer to next meeting for more answers.
Well, what I, I, I think instead of deferring, I, um, my personal opinion is you would, we take no action on this unless somebody wants to take action. But you take no action and then at the next meeting, because that number may be different. If we just defer this, it's going to be exactly what this is. So I would say, don't defer it and submit if you want another agenda on, submit. Because that 21 six, I think that's the same number that it's been since 2020, right? Um, I know MIS is they were going through, they were updating their expenses. And I'm pretty sure you guys, I mean, just with COLAs and that kind of stuff, your expense has gone up. County expense to do that on their behalf has gone up as well as I think you guys are, you know, manning more meetings than what you had anticipated in the beginning. Now, it's still the same number of employees, so it may not affect your bottom line from an estimate of need standpoint. But from a, if we're still in this sham versus no sham, then we should be billing in an appropriate amount. So I would think that those numbers would need to be adjusted from a 2020 number to a 2025.
Thank you.
No, they're adjusted. That needs to be, to Brandon's point, needs to be reflected in the trust and the made form back. I know it goes from our pocket to their pocket, back to our pocket, but it, it doesn't need to be reflected.
It wasn't weird. It's almost like it's our pocket, our, our pocket to the jail and the jail gives us their piece back and the same for employee benefits. That's what I'm saying for it.
Well, we're giving it to the, we're giving it to the clerk's office. The trust is basically reimbursing the county for front funding the clerk.
That one more time.
So.
That we're giving the jail the money to do that.
Yeah, but it's not a, it's not a double. I'll give you 100 and you 100 and then you guys both give me back and then I'll give you one and out of your, I'm up a hundred dollars from that. It, it's not like that. We, they are, they're front funding, or I'm sorry, we are front funding them. And we're giving the trust the money to reimburse us for our expense. So it's still just a one payment over there, but your analogy of giving me an envelope. Right.
Mm-hmm. Right.
I, I get why. It's just, it's just mad, mad confusion to me.
Well, you've got a whole month to think about it. He's going to have a whiteboard, you know?
Or the rest of us are going to be thinking about it. Wait a second. He was right. What is going on? All right. Is there any action on item seven? If not, we'll move to item eight. Discussion possible action regarding recommendation to budget board to transfer the 500,000 in general fund reserves to employee benefits. Uh, John had explained, uh, the rationale behind this. Believe it was, uh, $300,000 to front fund prescriptions that pharmacy needs to purchase to begin next fiscal year. And then $200,000 was for a cushion, uh, to finish out this fiscal year in case there is a pop in claims.
Yeah. So I know that 300,000 is needed. We, we may be able to sneak by until the first, the next fiscal year and just purchase as we can. But 3,000, 300,000 would get us basically a month's worth of prescriptions. And, um, and the 200,000 is just efficient. We don't have to do the 200,000. Just what if, what if the next several weeks come in line?
Is this for the 12th or the 18th?
It, it'd be nice on the 12th.
John, on the 300, the way you described the process, so if we give you the 300, then the 300 would just roll back to us every month or so, right? So. And I don't know if this group has a, a preference where you would take the money from out of the ongoing operations for the one time funds that are sitting in reserve right now. This almost seems like a one time expenditure to be able to get that, that churn going.
This is the first time I've done it going to a new fiscal year. So it's one time kind of fronting it.
And then next FY, if the process is working properly, we shouldn't need to infuse cash.
Correct, correct.
Am I reading it back correctly?
You are. That's, that was getting ready to bring up. Yeah. We talked about redoing it. If we're front funding it here, we shouldn't have to redo it because let, let's just say our, our estimates of expense and revenue pan out to be penny for penny, which it won't. But let's just say that we infuse you to be able to start the year, you're actually going to have more money for next year. So this time next year, you should have 300 to 500,000 for one or the other, more than what you anticipated to start the year out with. So some of it that we gave you for next year, you can use to infuse your pharmacy purchases for January of 2020, or July of 2026.
Right.
And that still holds if your rebates lag 60 days behind.
Yeah.
Will this 300 take the place of that 216 or whatever on the watch list?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, really, I think 300,000 for pharmacies, great, obviously. Um, that'll be just what we need. The 200,000 extra, which is a cushion, we don't necessarily have. If, if it comes to that, we can have a special meeting asked for if you want to do it that way.
Christie, what's in?
Um, 8,357,187.36. So 1.3 of that is ongoing and just over 7 million is one time.
If we're going to do it, I, I'd be inclined to do it out of the, the one time funds.
So break up the 500, the 300.
I, I think. I, I think listening to John right now, I would do the three and hold up on the two.
If you're going to have, I mean, this was contemplating million dollar shortfall. But if you're going to have 1.2 million in, in rebates, that leaves you with a balance of $200,000 for this month to be able to cover potential increases. Is that correct?
Um, kind of. I just, you know, we're holding 937,000 worth of expenses. We're getting 2.2 million dollars. So I just calculated out what expenses are going to come in. And just based on averages, that was, leaves us 100 and something thousand dollar way forward in case it goes up, up. So this, that was just a, just a little cushion, just in case it went up above that. And that's kind of excluding the pharmacy.
And what is it? Is it the third week of claims that we cannot push?
Correct, correct. So that's calculated in there. And our claims have been doing great lately. They've been going down. So I'm just hoping for the best, but just trying to prepare for the worst, just in case.
I mean, eh, 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 keep in mind, this is a deal if we did the full 500,000. It, it goes in there and it stays there for when we have other situations and issues to where we might be short. So even if they don't need it now, it could be helpful and beneficial down the road. It's just for a month you had a special meeting. Right. Yeah. You did the full 500,000. Then it gives them a little bit more assurance and certainty to get through the fiscal year.
Tell me, if we could talk about this item in, in the context of what's on the current watch list. Is there anything on there that we're expecting?
Well, the CARES audit is out. I mean, that's not going to be something for this fiscal year. Um, unemployment coverage for commissioners. Have you guys heard anything on that? You got a watch list item for 7, 574?
Uh, no, not yet. We haven't seen more.
Special election, that one's out, right? I mean, we've not gotten a request from. No. For the benefits, that's what we were talking about. Chiller repairs and hot water heaters. And those are. I mean, we're, we're in June already. I mean, that's. So I think, I think the, I think the one thing is that, um, we got the IT, the Microsoft 365, the employee salary increase of a half a percent that we didn't do at the beginning of the year and, and potentially the. I mean, all of those numbers added up. There's sufficient, uh, funds in general fund reserve. I'm not saying that. We definitely do all of them, but there is the cash.
Is the salary increase, the merit increase that we did last year?
Well, yeah, we did, we only did two and a half. We did two and a half percent because we didn't know for sure. We weren't comfortable doing the full three because we didn't know where we were going to end the fiscal year. So we did two and a half percent upfront, put the additional half a percent on the watch list to make the determination towards the end of the year, what funds to.
I figured it was the merit and not some.
Yeah.
Well, I will go ahead and make a motion to make a recommendation to budget board to transfer the full 500,000 from general fund reserve to employee benefits, um, out of the earmarked, uh, one time funds.
Okay. We've got a motion to make a recommendation to budget board, transfer 500,000 dollars from reserve to employee benefits, uh, coming from the ongoing, I'm sorry, from the one time funds portion of the reserve.
I'll just make a comment. Um, I, I understand the justification for one time funds for 300, but the 200, that's just going to be in there in case we use it for ongoing.
Well, it's in there in case they need it to finish up the fiscal year for expenses.
Right. To me, that's more ongoing, the 200 and 300 being one time, the way we've had discussions.
I, I'm in agreement with Christie. I.
So I'll make the amendment to do the 300 from the one time and the 200 from the ongoing.
I'll second that.
It'll be an emotion and second to recommend budget board to transfer 500,000 dollars, 300, uh, from reserve, to employee benefits, 300,000 of it from the one time funds, uh, portion and 200,000 from the ongoing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it.
I'll put that as two separate lines on the watch.
Do what? I'm sorry.
That two separate.
Okay. Perfect. Yeah. Um, well, we have the watch list up here. Um, i- is there anything that, that we need to consider on that? Missioners unemployment coverage, uh, the IT, uh, 365 or the salary, um, the merit increase. I mean, if we're wanting to make a recommendation to budget board on any of those three items or anything else that is not on there, we'll need to do a, a special BET meeting between now and next week to get it on for the, um, regularly scheduled budget board meeting for June.
No, and in my mind, that might be needed as the unemployment coverage. We're just waiting, right?
On the, on next year's, um, budget, this current CDI is three, but we have the COLA check, COLA war merit. We decided to work that cap at three and a half percent, right? Top, tops of that half.
Uh, in my mind, it just, that drops off and then we have the new COLA at 3%, 3.5%.
Yeah. Cause if, if possible, it's certainly likely to cap that at a half percent. So we don't. What's a small percentage, but it still technically lowers the employees buying. Nation rises more than we give them.
Okay. Well, if it looks like on the unemployment amount, if it looks like you're going to need that, be sure and let us know so we can schedule a special. I would hate for $7,500, which we have the cash here to take care of it for us to wait. And then the last week of the month or even in July, we get a bill for a period in the previous fiscal year that we don't have the money available to pay and we're kind of in a, in a tough situation, it would probably be better for the $7,500 to be in there and potentially lapse. And it become available in September as opposed to us being in a pretty significant thing. So that it's a consideration.
Now, when you might know. Oh, on that, the unemployment coverage, on what, on the unemployment coverage, how do those?
Usually they're same quartering. And so, um, it was last month, whenever we paid, made, uh, the last quarter. So.
So we won't, we won't know. We need to, yeah. So we're going to need to do a special BET, I think, for budget board for next week to make a recommendation to transfers.
Are you not able to do that on write-up due?
I guess we could. Yeah. It's already on the watch list. So yeah, we could do that. Um. I mean, do we want to do it at that exact amount of 7,574 or would we want to? Round that. Where's that number come from?
Um, it was an estimate based off of what, uh, the, the last payment was. Also, we had anticipated it last thing up around 35,000 or something. We're probably doubled it. We doubled it in case. And we know that this person is now employed, so depending on the timing, that maybe we won't receive any of those.
And we know that this person is now employed, so just depending on the timing, that maybe we're not receiving their unemployment charge, but.
But if we do, the seventy five will up it for sure.
Yeah, you see, isn't employed long, then depending on those quarters, we'll pull back on us.
Yeah, that'd be next fiscal year, though. That'd be next fiscal year, though. Well, what did Melissa say? Yeah, for some reason she quit her job.
Again.
Yes, there's somebody, yeah, we just don't have a hope for certain quarters.
But what I understand Jessica to say though is that the seventy five seventy four would cover the full quarter of payments. So if if they weren't employed right now at all, worst case would be the seventy five seventy four. So.
You paid quarter two, and this is quarter three and quarter four then.
No, that should be quarter two, we paid quarter one, that should be quarter two, this quarter three and four would be next fiscal year.
Okay.
Build until after June, but we have more June.
Yeah, almost say that putting in.
I think so, too.
Putting in the money and then covering it for that purpose and holding it and then.
Absolutely.
Accounts, yeah.
And then just let.
You would need to go ahead and cover it.
No, I mean, somebody's gonna tell me what the accounts went a days ago. I'll make a motion that the seventy five hundred and seventy four dollars for general fund reserve one time to.
General fund commissioners.
To general fund commissioners.
Yeah. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and second to recommend a budget board to transfer seventy five hundred and seventy four dollars from one time general fund dollar, general fund reserve dollar, to general fund commissioners.
For the purpose of potential on one time.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Anything else? Seeing none, uh is there any citizens that wish to participate? Any uh board comments, District two?
No, thank you.
Third? District three? One? Director?
Not to me.
Court clerk? Assistant?
Thank you.
Sheriff? See, new business, no new businesses, or motion to adjourn? Got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and second to adjourn, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? We have a adjourn.